Uh, yep.
David, we'll have a place for a comment in our meeting so we can hear what you have to tell us.
This one? Thank you.
At this time, I'll call the December 11th, 2014 Dixon County Commission Meeting to order. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, on our agenda, we have a printed agenda. We do have one addition, and that is to review and sign the KDOT agreement for 3465 Sage Road Bridge Project. And so I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
You have the motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item we have is the approval of the consent agenda. That includes the minutes of December 4th work session, the regular meeting, also a check for the property at 203 East First Avaline, $34,943.10. Added tax, $2,887.96. And abatements of $5,757.40.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You have the motion in second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time, we'll go to Commissioner comments and committee reports. Craig, if you'd start us off, please.
Yeah, after our meeting last Thursday, I headed Floyd to the North Central Regional Planning Commission. We had the Pat Aker from Potlawn Gadsden Hoplin was there, did our budget. A little later, our official year end's 30th of June, but they apologized for it. It's just a single audit, so it took a little more time, and there's not many people in the region to do it there. They took it over about six years ago, I think, for Smokey or for North Central.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but there's gonna be some changes coming, so she just wanted to give us the proposals for one year rather than a three-year, not to exceed because of the accounting changes that are gonna happen as federal governments come across. So we voted to go with the one year, and then at that time, we'll decide if we wanna put out for bids. But I think Doug said there's only two other firms in our region that do that kind of work. Perhaps what she does, they're probably gonna do four counties, including ours, and a couple cities. Kind of, how many people, firms do it? So it's, uh, also attended the extension banquet, the reelection officers last Thursday night. Real good time with the bingo game they had there. I mean, we could try to do something like that for, I want right off the bat, because it was, there wasn't, was that your, I don't wanna say that, honor if you had a bingo? I got one right before you even called me numbers.
Yes.
No, that's all I have.
Now, I also attended the extension elections last Thursday night, and the bingo game, I might elaborate a little bit on it. It was a fun game, and it did bring out a lot of facts in the, that the extension program benefits, and, like I say, the number of participants at some of these things, and the, I guess there was a, they had estimated the valuation of the agriculture production in this county at $135 million, so it is a sizable amount that agriculture does represent in the county each year. But there are other things that the, the facts, the things that the extension had done, and it just makes you more aware of what they really were doing. This morning, in our work session earlier, we did have a discussion with John Barker, our representative, and some of the things that they will be dealing with at Topeka this year, and so we'd like to stay in touch and make sure that we are aware of the things that does affect our county.
Okay, thank you. Earlier today, Representative Barker was here, and we always appreciate him stopping by before the legislature actually goes into session, although he's going down there tomorrow, so they certainly have work that they do. You know, we've expressed our concern that with the budget situation and some of the things that we're hearing about, that we're hopeful that he's mindful and looking out, you know, not just for our district specifically, but the county, and he acknowledged that lots of things will be on the table, and probably everything on the table for that matter. So we'll stay tuned to see how things take place. The other, one of the other things, we did have a department head and elected officials meeting this morning where we just kinda had an overview and heard from each one. One of the things that I mentioned down there, and I'll just go ahead and mention here, I have received some feedback from a few people after the tax statements happened to go out, and they just expressed concern, not specifically for, on the county budget, but just that when you have the accumulation of the hospital, and the school, and the city, and the county, and so on, that the cumulative effect, you know, certainly impacts the taxpayers. And one of the things that I did mention to them, that although we set the budget and passed the budget that will go into effect in January, that as county officials, and I express this to the department heads and elected officials, you know, basically, we budget every day and every week and every month, and need to be mindful of what our expenditures are, and I think you, Laverne, you mentioned down there, kind of a little slogan you had heard once about the...
Yeah. Better service at a better price.
Better service at a better price. And that is something, people do not want services cut back, and so we're, you know, we need to do all we can to stretch the dollars and make them effective use. So we're aware of those discussions and comments, and welcome those comments. I do have a KAC meeting as a board member that will take place tomorrow, so I'll be going down to Topeka for that. And that's not all I had. Was there any other comments that any of you had received that you'd wanna bring up at this time? We'll go ahead on, we do not have any petitions or proclamations. David, did you have something you wanted to bring up at this time, or are you here just to observe?
Well, I do have an agenda. I'm kinda here to observe as well, and maybe learn something. But I keep receiving citations for Hogs at Large, and I would like to change that.
Okay. And this is from KDHC?
This is from Dixon County.
Okay. And maybe you could give us a couple of copies of that that you've received, and, you know, legislatively, I...
Yeah, I'm just preliminary here.
Yeah.
I talked with Forrest Bueller from K-State Mediation, and he sent me some of what's gone on in the past, and Supreme Court stuff.
Sure.
Anyway, we're kinda in the early stages, but I didn't know if I needed to set up in advance or what, so I'm here to look to find out all these things.
Okay, give us some preliminary information that we can, you know, consider, and then...
Yeah.
Is this a regulation that's just changed?
No, it's, I think it's been on the books for quite some time.
And have you received notices continually over the years, or is this more of a newer event that you're starting to...
Um, just the last three years I've had trouble.
I don't know if any of the other commissioners are...
Well, I'd say we put in a work session, you know, get preparation.
Yeah, we have, we could schedule you for a work session and discuss it further.
Okay, yeah.
Because we, we meet from nine till 11:00 on Thursday mornings, and as long as you could schedule in a work session for us, would be best.
And if we had some information in advance, just to kinda have an idea of where it's going, and, you know, we're certainly concerned if it's something that impacts, even only you, but we're an agricultural area.
Right, right. If we can develop more farmers in our county, I'd like the $135 million egg dollars coming into Dixon County. Yeah, if we can develop more farmers in this county or in the state, we'd be a lot better off. I read where Iowa's still importing 80% of their food. Aren't they kinda the red bastards of the United States? I just came from the Farmers Union Convention, and they had Cody Holmes from South Missouri. He's, I think, an hour east of Springfield, but he is, he raises all, multiple species, all agriculture species, including chickens, and ducks, and turkeys, and goats, and sheep, and pigs, and cows. But he, he's pretty much vertically integrated. He's got 1,100 acres. I think he has 10 people working for him, and it's all pasture, and he delivers to 31 grocery stores, and then he delivers door to door. He has full-time people just doing his deliveries. And just started out, you know, as a regular rancher with 600 cows, I believe, and now he has 300 cows. And that many goats, and that many sheep, and half that many pigs, it's pretty impressive. Anyway, I'll put together something for stable.
Yes, thank you for coming in, and if you could get something to either us or to Brad, you know?
Okay, we'll get this all put together that makes more sense.
We are in the process of putting together an economic development for this county, and this might fit in with some things that you're interested in too.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And you don't have to leave.
We have other agenda items, but you may have other things to do too, so if you do care to leave, you can, but if you wanna stay, you're certainly welcome. Okay. Any other comments at this time, we'll go ahead and hear from, or...
Doug, anything? Doug, give me a comment.
You know, we finished up the paperwork for the tax sale last Friday, and so all of those deeds have now been recorded, and we'll mail out the deeds to those people who bid and were successful at the tax sale. And then I'll let Brad know that next week, we'll have the independent contracts ready for your execution, and the others have been circulated, and they are ready to present to you next Thursday. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Brad, if you'll give your report, please.
Sure. You've got the 2015 pay count or payroll calendar date scheduled, if you want that on. We distributed that out. Just a little update on the, and follow-up on the message I'd sent you earlier on the Quail Road Bridge, the bridge that we closed at 2050 Quail Road. That particular bridge is, you know, as we talked a little bit last week, I guess, in some of the comments that I've heard from the public when we sent out our notice to everybody and closing the bridge. The first question I've gotten back, and I think one of you or maybe a couple of you had mentioned the same thing, is what's our plan? And I think that's a viable question. And John and Martin and I met pretty extensively this week, and brainstormed, and John and I actually went out and looked at it, and he's made some calls and did some inquiries, but as he said in the work session this morning, we've basically got three options there, and I think after we, the first year, when we meet with township, and maybe have a public meeting, invite some of those ranchers, farmers, and residents that live out in that area, and work out in that area, and talk to us and get their feedback, will give us a little bit of an idea of what direction may be appropriate to go. But obviously, the first option is do nothing, leave it there, and eventually take it out, and let people drive around. That'd be the zero cost that John referred to. Now, the second option, or third, I don't know what order you had them in, but was us just paid to put the thing in? It's gonna be, you know, our estimates might be a million dollars, ten or nine hundred thousand, give or take, what day and month you do it here, or what the prices are. The third option we came up with, and might be the more realistic viable option, would be to remove the bridge that we've had on down on 800 Avenue from the off-road system right now. Grant application we've had in for a couple of years, and we've got turned down. Remove it for right now, put this one on, because this is a fracture critical bridge, which moves it up to the top of the surface when it comes to priority with KDOT. And you'd get it, get grant money or apply for grant money for it from the, from KDOT with the federal transportation money to replace it, since it's on the off-system bridge side. So that way, we would essentially be probably coming up with a 75-25 or 25% match when it's all said and done. Be looking at, you know, 300,000 as opposed to 900 or a million, which would be a lot easier pill to swallow from a budgetary standpoint. And that's some options that we could discuss, but I just wanted to throw that out on the table so that as you guys are posed with questions in the public, you can say, we do kinda have a plan, and it depends on what needs to be done, what you, as a public, wants to do, what you decide as a county commission, what you think's the best, and it's a lot easier to swallow than saying, we don't have money to replace it, it's dead in the water. There are some options there, so. And after the first year, we'll get a chance to do some meetings, and hear from the public and township, wanna give you guys a little bit of foundation to go on there, so. And originally, I think we kinda thought, well, gosh, we don't have money to do anything, and we're just, this is a dead issue, but there may be some other options there, and like I said, we've been turned down on the 800 Avenue a couple of times. Don't have any reason to believe that they wouldn't pass it sometime, but they're, they've told us, and they've showed by their actions at KDOT, that fracture critical removal and replacement's our top priority. We kinda saw in the video I showed you earlier why, because it doesn't take much to collapse them when you start damaging them, so. That's it on Quail Road at this point, and just as a highlight to that, we put our barricades out, and Craig had called me, or emailed me, I guess it was Sunday, and said one of the barricades had been moved.
Yeah, it was there Saturday night, we came home, and Sunday morning, the church was gone.
Yeah, so we've had a little bit of vandalism so far, but we found it in the west or so, and was able to move it back over and put it in place, but apparently, somebody didn't agree with the barricade being there, decided to move it, which obviously is a traffic issue and a safety issue, but we're monitoring it pretty closely, and we've actually asked Martin to stop and talk to the residents there besides Craig, and even on the south side, and if they see anybody down there, let us know, and if they see the barricades are moved, let us know, because we will get out and put them back up right away. And by now, they may have some...
They got it done, yeah.
Yeah, we're waiting on the locals to come in before we can punch holes in the ground, so.
Toothie, I believe, but...
So now, we're gonna have to work a little bit harder to get them taken care of, so.
Well, I'll comment on that. There's one of my neighbors on which, their name, but they saw that, that's before they put up, well, the little sign was still there, they, you know, saw the sign, road closed, bridge out, or whatever it said. Said, I just had to drive down there to see, you know, if I could still get across it.
It's like a hill. I just had to climb it because it was there, right? Yeah. On the 203 House, you know, on the agenda, we've got that there, a place to close today. The owners wanted to close sooner than the 5th of December, or January, I'm sorry, and so we, from the agenda, they're pretty bad, so that's...
Is that, that the East House?
That's the west one.
Oh, that's the west one?
That's the small one, yeah.
Oh, okay.
The East one's the one that the bank owns, and they're not in any hurry to close, so...
Oh, okay.
And I think Doug's been working with the title company.
The title company?
I think they've pretty much gotten me taking care of that, so.
Yeah.
So as of today, we'll have that one closed on, so. And then now on 1700 Avenue, we showed you the video, just a little highlight of that. Several years ago, we closed the, we closed a small fracture critical bridge out on the 1700 Avenue West, I have it on West of Jeep. Been closed for several years, and that was kinda interesting. I don't think, do we have the public hearing? I don't think you were on the commission yet, were you, or am I?
That was, right when I got was getting on, I'm not sure if it took action on that before I got on.
That was, that was an interesting one, because we had a similar situation to Quail. It's a, it's really a similar bridge, although it doesn't have the ends on it. Construction design's exactly the same. Same situation happened. It degraded to the point that it was an over safety pass, and we closed it, and we were trying to determine whether to move forward and plan on replacing it. We had a public hearing, had a full room, and much to our surprise, everybody, all the locals that came in said, man, don't waste the money on that thing. Spend the money wiser somewhere else, we can go around that mile or two. And we really figured that everybody would come in and say, yeah, we gotta have that bridge, and it was just the opposite, so. My point being is there is a lot of value in public opinion if you can, you know, take the time to ask for it, so. But on this one, we actually, the guys had time this week, took about three days, four days, they went out, dropped the bridge, and pulled it out, and quit cutting it up, and it sounded like cement, primarily just to get it out there so it's not a hazard, like Craig mentioned, if it's there, people are gonna try to walk across it. We had the beams off that one, or the planking, so it was nothing but beams, but, and it was really, it really was apparent how those beams had been bowed over the years. When you look at them when they're gone, they've got a big sway to them. It's, it's just amazing that it lasted the way it did, and with the pillar the way it was and fell over after they tipped it off, I don't know why it kept it, kept it standing, so. But they've, they've got it out of the way now, and that's all cleaned up, and everything's done, so. And then I provided the line with the personnel forms, if you get to the point of deciding on the elected officials today as far as the salaries, we'll complete those, so. That's all I've got. Does you have any questions, so? Yes?
I'm gonna look here for the 2645, my math.
Well, that's why I wanted to.
You know, they were using this the other day.
They took our maps away.
They're using it for Affleck, and I think they cleaned their stuff off, probably just put it back.
I'm gonna look for this 2645, 2665 bridge, I thought, what?
With the jury trial going the other day and stuff, that week, we're at a conference room, so Affleck was using this room to move the police.
Yeah, now I feel better.
Somebody wanted to push people over there, and I thought...
Like, yeah, there we go.
So that's all you have then?
That's all I've got, yes.
Okay, we'll move on to notices and communications. I think most of you are aware, but David Platt is, has, is retiring, and so there is a reception that will take place. Of course, he's a district court judge of the 8th Judicial District, that's gonna be Wednesday, January 14th, 2014, 4:00 p.m. That's gonna take place at the Gary County District Courtroom Number One, and that's in Junction City, 138 East 8th Street. So we'll need to, I think, you know, weather permitting, when it gets closer to, we can kinda decide if you need to put notice, but I plan to attend, and possibly both of you or others would attend. I have a letter from Faith Sump, and this is something that she also copied in, other elected officials, Leah Hearn, and Barbara Jones, and the county attorney, and we've received letters in the past, but she's in dispute with the county on her valuation, and some of the things, more specifically, that have to do with Dixon County Appraiser. And some of the response that we have given in the past is that this, this is an area that we do not have the right or ability to mediate, or intervene, or supersede, or agree, I mean, we're, this is really not under our jurisdiction. The other part, and she did have some items of litigation that she wants to have take place to try to settle this, and, you know, once again, this isn't, Doug, I guess, really something that the county commission can consider, so, but we did receive the notification. And she does have procedures that she can go with at Topeka and through the state of Kansas procedurally, anytime you are in, you disagree with what the appraiser has given, so. I have a magazine from the Kansas Preservation Group, and, and so it has more to do with some of the structures throughout the state of Kansas, and I'll let the others take a look at that. Just a notification of a Fred Pryor seminar, and this is, has to do with supervisors. I have our letter, newsletter from the National Association of Counties, and then also a report from the clerk of the district court, and just kinda giving us the monthly report, which we had requested that she provide us with, and it just kinda gives us an overview financially of what's taking place there. I've got a letter from the U.S. Department of Commerce. Brad, I don't know if that's something that we have done in the past, I, but I'll just go ahead and turn this over to you, and it's just a survey of local government finances, and I think they're just gathering information so they can provide some data, and I don't know if that's something, they just sell it, or they...
We do, every year.
I'll go ahead and let you take care of that, and I believe that's all we have. Are there any other written letters or notifications the rest of you are aware of that you'd wanna bring up?
You didn't have any on...
No, I was gonna try to get a little, I can't get it, it won't open.
Oh.
So, it's evidently offline.
Bruce, right before you got here, I just opened up the letter that we'd received from Faith Sump, and it had to do with, with her concern on the appraisal process, and Doug is, from an attorney standpoint, has indicated to us previously that, I mean, that's not something that the commissioners are involved with, that there's a procedure to go through, and there's an appeal procedure through the state, so it was just more of an acknowledgement, we received the letter. Were you here on something else, or...
It's information for Laverne.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
We do not have, I'll move on then, we do not have any resolutions to consider under other business. We still have the review and approved applicant update report from the Department of Commerce for the Navar Canstep project, and this just involves a signature, and it's more of just a procedural housekeeping.
Yeah, it is just as an update to Department of Commerce on the current vendors that have been approved by you. As you can see, they're, they're listed on there, and we just periodically do an update to the Department of Commerce on that project, and that's all basically a procedural thing, so.
Okay. And BG Consultants, and Clark Lumber Company, Jones Electric, Inc., Kansas Rural Water Association, KVK, Inc., and North Central Regional Planning Commission, so. And most of these are for either architectural design, or suppliers, or inspection, or administration. So we'll need a motion for approval unless there's any questions.
I say move, we approve the agreement.
I'll say it.
You have the motion in the second for approval of the agreement with Kansas Department of Commerce, and this is on the Navar Canstep project. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have a, a good motion? How often are laboring reviews that stuff, is there, the work progresses, Brad? Is that, is there any kind of schedule I've got, or...
I don't know that there's a schedule in place right now. They're just starting to kick off.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was looking at what they've done in the past, you know, like at Enterprise, or, I mean, everyone's different, probably?
Enterprise, we didn't have a lot to do with that. The city did that, but got it to Woodbine.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
The fire station, we did, and I think we did annually, or maybe every six months, during the busy period. They're gonna go through periods in the winter time where it's really slow, and some of the projects where it just drags on, but I don't know how Woodbine's gonna do. We've kinda monitored from an accomplishment standpoint, and then maybe just have them come in, you know, every six months or so. If they get a lot more accomplished, they may want to come in and update you, but...
I didn't know what our responsibility was on monitoring.
I don't know, we have a responsibility, this stipulates the time for that.
Okay. Well, I know, yeah, three years for the, you know, completion, okay.
Yeah, so, we're just, you know, we have to get reports for them on activity.
Right.
And if it looks like they're getting quite a bit done, I might ask Russ or somebody to come in and, not Russ, but...
Right.
Right, yeah. I'm thinking the other riffle, Russ riffle, I had Russ on the month of Woodbine. Right riffle, maybe come in or stop in and update on it, but right now, it's been a little bit slow getting everybody contracted and stuff, so they should be able to get off... off the ground, you know, kicking off here hotting everybody any time now, so.
Okay, the next item we have, this was one that was added on to our agenda, and that's review and sign the KDOT agreement for 3465 Sage Road Bridge Project.
This is the KDOT agreement to finalize that project. If you recall, this is the 120,000 dollar bridge project from across the street, where KDOT allocated $10 million to replace the smaller bridges across the state that otherwise would not qualify for federal funding. And I think they ended up having, if I remember right, about 71 applicants that were granted on that, which one of ours was. This will provide up to $120,000 of federal funding for that. We'll have to, we'll end up putting in about 25 or 28 by our estimates at this point, which is still a good return on investment to get a bridge replaced, so. And that's done by outside sources, totally contracted.
Yeah.
We don't have anything to do with it other than just paying the bill, so.
Any questions for the commission? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we sign this contract on this bridge.
Second? Okay, the motion, the second to sign the contract on the bridge, and this will be in agreement with Michael S. Kane, Secretary of Transportation, with KDOT, and also with Dixon County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, also on the yays, opposed, motion carries, and that requires the signature of all three of us. And I don't believe there's any other business, is there a motion for adjournment?
Did you want to pick up the elected officials' hours?
Oh, yes, I, okay.
You've got the forms, sir, so, and I didn't know what you wanted to do on that, if you wanted to, we used, Diane used the same 2%, 2.5%, 3% ratio, and if that's what you wanted to go with for them, but if not, we can alter it and-
I, I feel like we should keep it the same as what we did with, with the, the raises that we gave the best of the administration. And it does, I guess, why I kind of like that is, you know, the higher salaries, percentage wise, are not getting quite as much, but in dollar wise, they still are, and so it's not like the percentage that keep spreading higher, spread between the lower and the higher salaries, so the 2%, 2.5%, and 3% wasn't for the lower.
Yeah, yeah, 3 up to 50, 57, 2.5, about 70.
Any further discussion or questions? This is on our personnel change form, and we'll need to approve that and also send that to Diane. So, is there a motion for that?
Shall we move?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second, and that we go ahead and forward this information on what we had budgeted in regards to the elected officials' pay form, and the amounts of 2% to 3%, depending on the amount of their current salary. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Shall we adjourn?
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second for adjournments. Before I call for the motions, we'll need to sign every page of this, and so, so you'll need to stay around long enough for that, if you would please. All in favor of the adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.
Can I sign it first?
You guys need to-
Yeah.